Good evening. Thank you for joining us this evening. I would now like to call the Winton Woods Board of Education regular meeting to order. It is December 17th, 2018, 6:30 PM. And if everyone could please turn their cellular devices down on vibrate silent, we would greatly appreciate that. And please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Applause) Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Mr. Seymour, would you please call our role?
Sure. Mrs. Rugliss.
Present.
Mr. Birdy.
Present.
Dr. Johnson.
Present.
Mrs. Kuhn.
Present.
Mrs. Miranda.
Present. The first item on our agenda this evening is our music of the holiday season by our very own Winton Woods High School Choir. And, Mr. Stumpf, we turn to you.
Hey, good night, everybody. How we doing?
Good.
We can do better than that. How we doing?
Good.
Thank you, guys, so much for having us out tonight. I just want to thank the Board of Education for allowing us to do so many great opportunities. We come every year and sing at one of these board meetings, and it's always fun to sing some of our favorite Christmas songs and get in the spirit of the season. These are just a few of our members from our Winton Woods Varsity Ensemble, the top choir here at Winton Woods, and we just have a few songs for you, guys, so hope you enjoy. Thank you.
(Music) 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 (Music)
Standing ovation.
(Applause) 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 (Applause)
Thank you all so much. That was beautiful.
Yes.
All right. Next up on our agenda this evening is Item 2.01, our District Honors: Recognitions, Gifts, and Introductions. Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board. Is Aries here tonight?
(Inaudible)
Yes. Been waiting for you. Come on up to the podium.
(Laughter) She's open. I love your shirts.
We were going to keep waiting every month until you showed up. (Laughter) Aries is a kind... This is from Ms. Geisler, Aries' teacher. "Aries is a kind student in our class and exhibits the trait of fairness. Aries follows all school rules and treats others with kindness and respect. She is willing to work with anyone in her class and is positive in her collaboration. When playing games, Aries is not only a great winner, but she's also a good loser. She encourages others and congratulates them. She doesn't get upset, cheat, or quit if she's not winning a game. Her behavior sets a great example for her classmates, and that's why she is the November Kiwanis Characterist Key for Fairness Award recipient, Aries Donaldson." Wow. (Applause)
So, since we don't have our Kiwanis representative right now, I don't see anybody. I'm going to read this for them. Okay, this says, "Kiwanis Characterist Key Award. In special recognition of your outstanding character trait of fairness, within the character of an individual lies the welfare of the nation. It is character that enables the individual to survive, to endure, and to transcend the negative. Your values reflect your commitment to be a student of good character to your peers, your teachers, your parents, and your community." Congratulations. (Applause) Can her family come on up for the picture, please?
Come on, family. Come on. (Laughter) 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 (Laughter)
The next award recipient is in regards to the Skyline Student-Athlete of the Month. And KC, we've been waiting on you for a couple of months there, so... (Applause) KC told me earlier he couldn't make it because he was trying out for the Bengals because they need some people. (Laughter) There's a lot of people. KC Spears is an eighth grader stu... Eighth grade student with... At Winton Woods Middle School. KC plays on the middle school football team and has an incredible GPA of a 3.7. Wonderful. This season, he played several positions for the Warriors. One of these positions included being our emergency quarterback for the remainder of the year when our starter went down with a season-ending injury. Along with playing quarterback, KC played running back, outside linebacker, and cornerback. He excels in each position. He has a very high football IQ and is very coachable. KC is like a coach on the field. To be nominated for the Skyline Student-Athlete of the Month, students must maintain an academic standard of 3.0 or above in the previous quarter, show respect for coaches, teammates, officials, teachers, other students, and family, show enthusiasm and a positive attitude, display commitment to practice games and personal skill development, demonstrate honesty in playing by the rules, have high moral character. The Skyline Student-Athlete of the Month award is sponsored by the Forest Park Skyline Chili Restaurant, a business partner of Winton Woods City Schools. Student athletes are honored, receive a Skyline gift card. Thank you, KC. (Applause)
Come on up, family.
Ms. Miranda, before they come up, remember, if you're taller than the mic, you have to say a few words.
(Laughter)
He's a quick thinker, too.
Yeah.
Who's taller than the mic?
He's like a coach on the field.
Yeah, right.
He thinks fast. (Laughter) 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 (Laughter)
Ms. Quanta Jones here tonight. What about Riley Lanchard? Okay. We'll move on. Is Ms. Jenny Lyons here? Does she make it?
(Inaudible)
Okay. Moving on to the next Spirit Award. Mr. Richard Bedford. (Applause) This award is presented to an organization or an individual to recognize their significant contributions to the Winton Woods City School District over a period of many years. Thank you for your service, sir, and we're going to have you say a few words, but you did give me some information on the way in, and you said you didn't make it last month because...
I forget what... What did I say?
You said it was... It was... You know what you said, sir. And I know what you said. You said it was your wife's fault, so you don't want to repeat that, do you?
I forgot.
Okay.
No, I'd like to thank the community as well as the school district for the support for all this many years.
I got you.
Thanks a lot.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you a lot.
Family picture time.
Beautiful family. (Applause)
Several weeks ago, I had the pleasure of attending the We Thrive recognition ceremony, and I am going to have two members of our community come up and read the proclamation. Mr. and Mrs. Denny.
(Laughter) You don't say.
Yes.
So, the show that you guys are such an incredible team, read every other line, trade back and forth. There you go. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and good evening, Board.
Good evening.
This is a proclamation recognition of the 2018 We Thrive Schools. Whereas Hamilton County Public Health's We Thrive Initiative, established in 2009, creates partnerships between communities, agencies, and public health to generate broad-based support for creating healthy environments for all residents where they live, work, learn, and play. And...
Whereas the We Thrive Initiative encourages long-lasting change through creation and adoption of policies that support the health, safety, and vitality among all sectors of the community. And...
Whereas Hamilton County Public Health expanded the We Thrive Initiative in 2016 to establish infrastructure in an effort to enact and sustain meaningful change within schools. And...
Whereas the We Thrive Initiative seeks to engage schools in the development of a wellness committee dedicated to focusing on major areas of health and safety in the school environment. And...
Whereas Winton Woods City Schools assumed an active leadership role in improving the health and safety its staff and students as a We Thrive School District.
Now, therefore, be it resolved... Be it proclaimed, excuse me, that Winton Woods City Schools have successfully met or exceeded requirements for Year One We Thrive School District recognition, which includes a statement of commitment in support of the We Thrive Initiative, establishment of a wellness committee, and conducting a review of existing policies and practices that impact health, safety, and well-being of students and staff in the district.
Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Health of Hamilton County Public Health recognizes Winton Woods City Schools for its ongoing commitment to improving health, safety, and vitality of the school district by the order of the Board of Health of Hamilton County Public Health.
Very good. Thank you, folks. (Applause) Hold it. Ms. Jackson, can we get a picture, please?
Oh, no.
We Thrive. Thank you. That's the power of being an executive at Winton Woods City Schools. They're always ready, no matter what. The next award is Ms. Wilson here. I'd like for you to come up and present the award to Ms. Latonya Denison and the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Phi Psi Omega Chapter.
I'd like to invite the President of Alpha Kappa Alpha Phi Psi Omega Chapter, Latonya Denison, and the Vice President, Ms. Turney, to come up and say a few words. They're actually presenting us with...
Yes.
Something, so I'm going to get... Hand the mic to them.
And I'll need Mr. Smith to come up. (Laughter) Mr. Martin. Oh, yeah, there he is. I didn't see him come in. So, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated is the first Black regular organization founded on the campus of Howard University in 1908 for college women, and Phi Psi Omega Chapter is the local chapter here in Forest Park, and we were chartered in 2002. We have had a partnership with the Winton Woods School District for many years, back when... What was our first one we started with? Was our program...
On Track.
On Track. And Cameron Park. And so, just over the past four years, we were doing our program, launching new dimensions of service, and the program we implemented and we were able to utilize the library was Ascend, where we would meet with high school students from ninth to 12th grade, take them on cultural trips, do different type of workshops. Now, we'll be moving on into a new administration under the administration of Dr. Glenda Glover, who is also... She's our international president, and she is also the president of Tennessee State University. And her program is exemplifying service...
Expletive?
Excellent. Sustainable service. Almost forgot it.
We just called it excellence.
Excellence. Yes. So, and we're meeting here for a CAP program. That's the College Mission Process, where we're meeting with high school students as well, and we're going over the college process, where from searching for colleges, just for, you know, taking exams, just everything from the mission process, try to encourage the students here at Winton Woods and some in the surrounding schools to go forth for secondary education. And so, we want to just thank you all for allowing us to meet here in the library. We come here, you have allowed us to be involved with your school district over the past years, and so, we want to say thank you to Mr. Smith and the school district, and we'd like to give a donation for allowing us to participate here at your school. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. (Applause)
Hey, you, too. (Laughter)
I just want to especially thank Eric Martin, because I've called him numerous Saturdays to come open up, like something's gone wrong, and he always answers the phone and comes in and lets him in. So, thank you, Mr. Martin.
Yes. Yes, especially when we let the alarm off.
Yes, please come and turn it off. (Laughter) 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 (Laughter)
So, the next recipient, the next award, is the Community Spirit Award, and this award goes to a very special person who has blazed a trail of leadership, incredible opportunities, positive ideas about how to make our district a district of destination. And before she comes up, I'd like to have the entire board come up, please, to the podium.
I think you should come. I'll let you go first, Paul. Before I scoot out. I think... (Inaudible) (Laughter) 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 (Laughter)
You see the beautiful floral arrangements. This is not a funeral. (Laughter) But this is a growth. This is incredible growth, and we have really appreciated the leadership of Ms. Miranda, and she's moving on to become an incredible state rep so that she can make sure that everything that's supposed to happen in Columbus happens for all the students in the state of Ohio. So, on behalf of the district, I'd like to present her with the Winton Woods City Schools' Community Spirit Award, Jessica Miranda, December 17th, 2018. (Applause) I want each member to have a little...
Okay. (Laughter) Jessica, congratulations, and from the first time that I met you, I saw that you had a fire in your eye, and you were in it for the students, and I just want to wish you many blessings in continuing to make a difference and a change for the children in our community and surrounding communities. It's important for our community to acknowledge the hard work, her tireless dedication, her great advocacy for the students of our district, and she's going to carry that on to her next work, her next chapter, on even a greater level. So, she'll make an even greater impact, not only for our community, but for the serving communities in the area, and also for the state of Ohio. So, it's been a pleasure for me to work with Jessica. She's a great inspiration and a pleasure to work with. Thank you, Jessica. (Applause)
I just want to say to Jessica that she and I kind of ran our campaigns together two times in a row, and it was a pleasure working with you, and honestly, from the first time that I met you, I knew you were going to be one to watch, and I'm going to enjoy watching you as you continue to soar. And just to say that there's a saying that says, "Your gifts will make room for you," and I do believe that you have a remarkable gift, and I think that it's going to make room for you, because you're going to make it make room for you. So, having said that, I have appreciated working with her over the years, and I'm going to miss her, but, you know, I do believe that iron sharpens iron, and you don't always have to agree to make something good happen. So, you know, I'm going to miss her, but I know that she's going to carry on and do bigger and better things, and we'll be, you know, supporting you the whole way. And from the board, we know you're going to be back and forth on the highway, so we got you a little something to put in the gas tank. (Laughter) (Applause)
I've had the pleasure of being on the board since the end of 2015 and having worked with Jessica, seeing her commitment to the community, to the children of this school district, to doing the things that we need to do to make the opportunities there for our children for a better tomorrow. What you see here tonight is only a small part of what happens. I was looking... You've been on the board for five years. You've probably attended at least 180 board meetings. On top of that, there's agenda review meetings, there's, you know, graduation events, ceremonies, there's all kinds of sporting events, fine arts events, and Jessica is always front and center and out there for our children. So, I know that your commitment that you've shown here with Winton Woods, you'll continue to do that in your new role as a state rep, and we wish you all the best, and we're sorry to see you go, but we're happy for you. (Applause)
Well, thank you so very much. I didn't want to cry, dang it, but... (Laughter) Can I even put makeup on? (Laughter) Mr. Denny and Dr. Holden knows that's very, very seldom when that happens, so thank you very, very much. I am humbled and honored to have had the opportunity to serve this school district and therefore its children for five years. My kids go here, my kids will continue to go here, so we call Winton Woods home. We have done a lot of work collectively over the last five years to make this district a district of destination in southwest Ohio, and that is not just because of me or the people you see behind me that make the clock work, it's all of the folks out here in the audience, our wonderful administrators, our teachers, our wonderful parents and community members. So, thank you so very much. Just very, very grateful and humbled and honored, so thank you, and darn you all for making me cry, but thank you and go Warriors. (Applause)
I think you're red. I always have on red. (Laughter) So, can we get some darker... (Inaudible) Yes, there we go. (Applause) 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 (Applause)
All right, so now, we come to our recess, so thank goodness for that, so I can go get cleaned up before we come back for the rest of the meeting. We'll take a five-minute recess, and thank you all for being here again, and congratulations again to our wonderful students and community members. Okay, we will now resume our regular meeting. Next up on the agenda, we have public comments, and we do not have any of those this evening, so we will move on to Item Number Five, which is the approval of minutes as presented. So, board colleagues, unless you see any changes, a motion would be in order for that item.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Sure. Mrs. Rugliss.
Aye.
Mr. Birdy.
Aye.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, and we will move into item six, the financial statements for November 2018. Treasurer Seymour, we turn it over to you.
Sure. For the, we're looking at the month of November for the year-to-date for general fund. The year-to-date revenues are at $22.6 million, with month-to-date revenues for the month of $1.9 million, which was basically just two payments from our state foundation program. Our general fund expenditures for the year-to-date are at $20.3 million, and currently, we're running about $2.3 million under budget, which is about 4.2%, which last year at this time, we were at 5.6%. So, it's just to give you a little gauge.
Thank you. Mr. Seymour, any questions or comments for him?
I think he was done.
Oh, you weren't done? Sorry.
I'm fine.
Go for it, Randy.
The encumbered, unencumbered balance of all funds was $80 million, $16 million, which was the general fund, 9.7 building fund, and of course, 53.4 still in the classroom facilities fund, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Seymour? All right, we'll go ahead and approve the financial statement as presented and file for audit for November 2018. And we will move into your recommendations, Treasurer Seymour, starting with 7.01.
For the investments for the month of November, we had $92.7 million invested, and our earnings for the month of November were $109,000. General fund this month, for that month of November, was $67,000, and building funds, $16.9. You might ask, why has the bigger fund earned less than the smaller fund? The only reason is the timing of when those maturities come due, and a lot of the building fund maturities did not come due in November. And that's all.
Colleagues, a motion would be in order for this item.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the investment report as presented.
Second? It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Sure. Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, and back to you, Treasurer Seymour, for 7.02.
Here you're being asked to approve from the Ohio Schools Construction Commission a revision to your project. If you recall, back in the spring, I believe it was around that time, where we had to amend the project to include a storm shelter. Now, it's been decided that the storm shelter can be removed, and this is adjusting your project to remove the storm shelter. What this does for the district is it allows us, you recall, we transferred from our local funds over to the state funds of $360,000. Now, down the road, I'll be able to return those, and it also frees up $1.3 million of your interest earnings to go back to your local-funded initiatives.
Yes.
So, we're asking you to approve the rescension of the First Amendment of the project and put this, take the storm shelter back of your approved project.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution, rescension of the First Amendment of the project agreement as recommended, which will remove the storm shelter allowance from the project in the amount of $2 million...
Thirty-four thousand.
Thirty-four thousand, $293.
I'll second, I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions or comments?
I guess that maybe just a little bit more explanation. I think it's the two storm shelters for each building that we don't have to. It's probably more of a statement than a question, apparently, it's coming up. But if Mr. Seymour can elaborate a little bit, what changes the state put in place that allowed us to...
They basically removed the requirement for a storm shelter for new construction. As you know, they put that into place, and we were caught in the middle because it wasn't part of our project to begin with, and they made us allocate interest funds and local, some of our local initiative funds. Now, the governor had rescinded that requirement, allowing you, if you so choose, to take the storm shelter back out.
Right.
I don't know if that's what you were...
Yeah, I just was hoping that our members, our people at home that watch might not know that, no wonder, just have some more transparency. And it was something that we did not build in the original design, and the cost initially, so it ran us over a little bit more than what we had projected. So it was helpful to have it configured back to the original plan.
It gives you back to your local funding initiative, more discretion in that $2 million that goes towards the construction of the building.
I appreciate that.
And Ms. Kuhn, that was going to be per site?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is it $1 million per site for a total of $2?
Any further comments? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, and Superintendent Smith, we turn to you for the reports of the superintendent.
Yes, Madam President and Board. Every parent out there is just excited that the students will be on break from December 20th to January 2nd. And the main part of every one of these reports, I'd like to thank the Teaching and Learning Department for working collaboratively with the Teachers Association and everyone in between. In the past, we had some issues where students were able to come back from winter break and still had to take exams from the previous quarter. So we've worked it out now, and we've done that for several years, that when they return on January 2nd, it will be a brand-new quarter, new opportunities, new initiatives. And so I think it was a real burden for the children to come back over winter break. I don't know how much they prepared and how much they studied, but to come back to an exam, I thought, was not a really good idea. So this way, it's a more cohesive, and that's through for all of our kids and all of our schools. So that's the major piece of the reports for the schools at this point.
Any questions for Superintendent Smith before we move on to 8.02? All right, then let's do the first reads for the revised board policies.
Yes, Madam President and Board, these are the first reads. Bylaw 0141.2, Conflict of Interests; Legislative 0.0131; Notice of Meetings 0164; Regular Meetings 0165.1; Bylaws for Special Meetings 0165.2; Recession and Augment 0165.3; Executive Sessions 0166; Policy 1422, Administration, Non-Discrimination and Equal Employment of Opportunity; 2260, Program, Non-Discrimination and Access to Equal Education Opportunity; Policy 3122, Professional Staff, Non-Discrimination and Equal Employment Opportunity; and finally, Policy 4122, Classified Staff, Non-Discrimination and Equal Employment Opportunity. This is for information at this point, but these will be, will come back to the board in January for final.
And any questions on those before we move on? All right, Superintendent Smith, back to you for your recommendations for the personnel schedules.
Yes, and my final report, Madam President and Board, is Personnel Schedules 9.01. To approve personnel schedules, Schedule A, C, D, and E for December 2018.
And Board, a motion would be in order for this item.
I'd like to make a motion to approve personnel schedules as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Sure. Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, and we will move into setting the date for the January 2019 organizational meeting.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to select and confirm the date of January 14th, 2019, at 6:30 PM at the Media Center High School here at this location, for the 2019 organizational meeting of the Board of Education.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, and now we'll move into comments from the members of our board. Mr. Birdy, we'll start with you.
You know, as we said before, President Miranda, we will miss you. Thank you for your service. It's been a pleasure. We haven't, as a board, it's nice to know we have five board members up here that care about what's going on in the district, and as we go through the process of appointing another board member, we'll be, you know, making sure that we find somebody that actually cares about what's going on in this district. So thank you for your service and your leadership. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Dr. Johnson?
Just to kind of echo that sentiment, I think that, as I said before, iron sharpens iron, and I don't think that people always have to agree in order to come to an agreeable conclusion. I think that sometimes it's sliced right down the middle, and I think that that's what makes, you know, that's what makes a good organization, when everybody's voice can be heard. And so I appreciate what you brought to the board, and I appreciate the work that you've done. I also want to say thank you to our community partners, always appreciate them and what they do for our district, and the time that they've spent to, you know, do things for our district. Also, as we move into the holiday season, I want to say thank you to all the teachers. I want you to get some rest and relaxation, which is much needed, and come back refreshed and ready to go. We do appreciate what you do for our students every day, that they're in school, and when you go home, we know the work doesn't stop just because you leave this building. As an educator myself, I understand that, and I think all of this board understands that, too. We appreciate the singing tonight, it was absolutely, and they did it like without a director. Did you see that? Like, it was like on their phone, and I mean, that is growth. I mean, you know, it was really amazing, I really enjoyed it. And we have some very talented students here at Wynton Woods, and, you know, I just appreciate being here on this board, and appreciate the opportunities that I've had to work with you and the other colleagues, so.
Thank you. Mrs. Kuhn?
It's, we appreciate Jessica Day here, because we really do. She's done a fantastic job. She's been a great partner for the district, she's worked tirelessly, and I appreciate that. I've seen her just work nonstop, she's like the Energizer Bunny, she just keeps going and going and going. And I know, like I said, she'll continue that on. I do want to appreciate our, and acknowledge all of our recipients, of our students. I appreciate the varsity ensembles, joyful music that they share. It's always incredible just to see the magnitude of talent and excellence that our district provides year in and year out in consistency. And also, as a board, we look forward to working with our community, with our students, with our teachers and administrators, to continue that excellence and to grow that. So, again, thank you, Jessica, for your hard work.
Thank you, Paula. Mrs. Ruggles?
As we get ready to close out this year, I just want to highlight that we had an amazing year or so with the accomplishments that have occurred, with the bond, with the levy, with the securing of ourselves in a placement in the league. Moving into the next year, I'm looking forward to us having a stronger focus, or, you know, really focusing on our goals, which is continuing with the community engagement, continuing to letting the community know that they're of value, and they're a part of this process of helping us move the district forward, continuing the focus of teaching and learning to improve academics, and also finding ways to be fiscally responsible. And I just want to wish everybody a happy and blessed holiday season, and I wish Ms. Miranda all the blessings as she transitions into her new role.
Thank you. And I'll keep mine short and sweet. Thank you again, the four members of this board you see sitting in front of you, and including Treasurer Seymour and Superintendent Smith. It has been quite a remarkable honor to serve alongside you. So thank you. And as Dr. Johnson always says, iron sharpens iron. I've been hearing her say that for the past five years, ever since I first met this woman, and it is just something that rings so true. So thank you. I know you all will continue to move forward in the right direction for this district, and you will be the leaders that you have consistently been and continually been over the past couple of years. So I appreciate that, and can't wait to go on to the new chapter, to work on behalf of everyone here in Wynton Woods and our communities. And again, I'm not going far, I'm not leaving town or anything. So if you ever need me, you know where to find me. Open-door communication policy is how I've always rolled and how I will continue to roll. So I greatly appreciate each and every one of you. And Randy, you are quite the treasurer, so thank you for your years of service, and for your guidance, and all the years of keeping things in order for us. We appreciate it. And Superintendent Smith, bravo. I mean, I have been in awe ever since I met you. I'm not going to cry again, dang it! But you are an amazing leader, so thank you.
Thank you.
Leading by example. Appreciate it. All right, now, before I continue to cry, let's go ahead and bring up our amazing... Okay, darn it, I was trying to segue into OC. All right, Superintendent Smith, any comments?
So, yeah, I have a few. I want to go back to something, and we're going to coin this, you know, anytime we hear something, we coin it and we use it. So we're going to call this WAJD, We Appreciate Jessica Day. And Mr. Kramer and Mr. Distel would love to thank you personally, because you did something at the legislative breakfast that you didn't know you did. And so I'm bringing their, echoing their sentiments about thanking you for coming, speaking to all the superintendents about your next role and your next leadership opportunity. You mentioned that the, your team, or a team that you'll sit on, had a session that lasted until 11 or 12 o'clock at night. Well, that session was so enduring and so painful that none of them showed up to the legislative breakfast, except for you. So, Mr. Kramer had mentioned that he was going to have this legislative breakfast and have state reps, and you were the only one. So, thank you. That made the district look really, really good. We were very, very proud that we actually had a state rep really there. We saw the name badges, but no rep, so thank you. So when you go to Columbus, you mentioned that you cover for all of those folks in that particular meeting. All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Anything from you, Treasurer Seymour?
You know, I usually present, but I just want to say that it's been great working with you over the five years. I've appreciated, I've worked with a lot of board members, and the community can rest that you always put the children first in your decisions. However, I'm looking forward to seeing how you try to direct state funding for education.
Absolutely.
And I know it's going to be a challenge, but I know you will be in there.
Yes. I will be in that ring fiercely. Thank you, Randy.
No pressure.
Yeah. All right, and now at this time, we'd love to bring up our wonderful associations, our association that hangs with us the entire board meeting, so thank you so much for being here. Our OC representative.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Board members, Mr. Smith, President Jessica Miranda. OC, we'd like to wish you the best in your endeavors, and like you said, you're not far away. We wish you the best. I also wanted to touch bases on our voice ensemble. I had the pleasure of taking them down to Music Hall last Saturday, all day, all day. They did really good, and I just wanted to say, OC would like to wish everyone a Happy New Year, safe and happy new year. Thanks, Merry Christmas.
Thank you. All right.
You know, hold it, you spoiled us? You kind of spoiled us a little bit. You gave us like Halloween treats and...